I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Get out on the day before it's going to get even colder, I guess, is what they're telling us. We can start, we don't have any public comment? Okay. Start with the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the previous meeting, the appropriations, the Lake Cabin Transfer B-40. And I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Okay, next, BG Consultants.
Do you want to start, Nick?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, you can go and kind of talk through.
Apologies, it's the first time I've been here. Do you want me up at the mic?
Please, yeah.
Or at least close enough to that they can hear you.
Yeah, state your name and then tell us what you've got.
Yeah, so my name is Brian Foster. I'm an engineer with BG Consultants. I've kind of started specializing in water and wastewater infrastructure over my career. And we came down, oh gosh, a few weeks ago and visited with Nick and the committee on utilities and Derek and talked through some different things that you guys might be looking at for utilities. Obviously, the infrastructure money is out there. It really hasn't been announced yet on how all those programs are going to receive funding for it, but we do know that it is coming through existing programs. It just really, the rules all in all haven't really been announced yet. But the existing programs, the three big ones, and I can cut this really short if you guys want me to, but the three big ones are the CDVG block grant, which I know you guys haven't been eligible for in the past, but I believe according, but you guys are trying to get eligible for that.
Well, HUD hasn't redone their part of the census. They're the ones that declare it as low to moderate income and the federal government has to update that. So we had a Lincoln Municipality's meeting in Topeka, when was that, in October? And I went to that section and they were waiting on the federal government to update that. So it's anyone's guess.
Right. And of course, you can always do your own income surveys to try to get eligible for it. Another one is the USDA Rural Development Program. They have a loan grant combination. And then KDHE has an SRF loan program that in some cases have some loan forgiveness. There's a lot of talk about lead in the water and things like that, that there's some loan forgiveness money out there for that. So basically, all three of these programs require application to them. A lot of them are competitive, some more than others. And part of that application process is always what we call a preliminary engineering report, which is an engineer putting together, going through your system, analyzing it, making recommendations for improvements. So tonight, I prepared two scopes of services, one for a water preliminary engineering report and one for a sewer preliminary engineering report. I'll kind of talk about these a little bit separately because they do have, they are separate applications too. You can apply for water or you can apply for sewer, you can apply for both, but it's through different programs. You can't do a little bit of water and a little bit of sewer all in one program or all at one time or all with one loan. On the water side, we have a scope that basically is just to look at the distribution system. From what we got from city staff is that your water treatment plant is in good enough shape and that we really want to focus on making some improvements to the distribution system, identifying a potential project that maybe you guys could apply for to meet your guys' need to replace some of the aging water lines in town. One of the main scope items that I have, and I kind of split these out a little bit, is there's drafting the report and going through and analyzing all the data. And then there's a part of a report that really wouldn't be necessary for funding, but it's a, it's a great tool for the city to have, and it's called a hydraulic water model. It's where we would put all your system into a computer program and, and be able to replicate improvements or, or look at areas that are maybe underserved for fire flow or things like that. And it allows us to make recommendations on pipe sizing for replacement. So if we had, you know, a five block stretch pipe, do we want to replace that with a six inch pipe or an eight inch pipe? Well, it's, it's hard to tell with a, with a big network of pipes of what we should do or shouldn't do. With this model, we can actually put information into it and change a pipe just by clicking a few buttons and see how that reacts and what kind of fire flows you might get or something like that. So I split those two out and just kind of, in the sake of time, I'm speeding through some of this. If you have any questions on any of it, just please ask. But I had $5,500 for drafting the report and then I had an $11,000 fee for doing the hydraulic model. My recommendation would be to do both of those. That model's a tool that the city would own and have. You know, I mean, it's, it's not proprietary. After we're done with it, I'll put it on a thumb drive and give it to you guys so that you guys can use it as you, I mean, most city staff don't have the ability to use it, but for some reason, if you wanted to go to a different engineering firm or something like that, you could definitely do that. I'm sorry.
It's okay, you can pull. Yeah, you can pull.
I agree with you.
It's hard to talk to you. Do you understand?
So, anyway, that, that model's basically a tool. And we'd be happy to maintain it for you guys if you guys did improvements or something like that. We could change it and add to it. We, I know we have an on-call contract with you guys where if you guys wanted us to analyze something, you know, five years down the road, we could definitely do stuff like that. But again, it would be, it would be your information that we would give to you guys. So that's on the water side. Before I move on, and if I'm going too fast, let me know, but is there any questions on, on what we would be doing or what we're proposing to do?
Modeling sounds a lot better than digging everything up, burying it and digging it up and burying it.
And it really allows us to maybe save some money in the future and say, well, instead of putting a 10 inch here, let's put an eight inch here or something like that. So it really helps us in that design aspect of making good recommendations for you guys.
I can see where, we've talked about, you know, a lot of the downtown businesses, buildings are talking about going into loss and different things, and they haven't, they don't have the right kind of pipe. Is that, am I looking at, am I steering down the right direction when I say that, that that would help?
The water in downtown, I think, is sufficient and maybe the surfaces going into the buildings aren't sufficient.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
The city doesn't deal with that. So we wouldn't have anything to do with that.
So that modeling, when this wouldn't help that, then the modeling would not help that?
No, most of what we do for modeling is we look at water turnover and if there's areas where maybe you're getting low chlorine residual, we could look at how, you know, water is moving through your system, but not through individual pipelines going into buildings. And then, and another good thing about what we can do with modeling is we can project fire flows. For the most part, in a town like this, if you're just turning the tap and flushing the toilets, you know, small diameter pipes work just fine. But when you're trying to get 1,000 plus gallons a minute out of a fire hydrant, you need a lot bigger pipes. And that's really how most systems are designed, is for fire flow. We can't talk about that a lot when we're applying for funding because they don't really fund based off fire flow, but they realize the implications and stuff like that. It does help us right-size things and make, give you guys good recommendations.
Okay, well, I just, I know that that's been an issue of a little bit here and there, and I didn't know if that would help with this or not, so.
One issue that it would probably show is this West Edition that we added on a few years ago needs to be looped back into the system. We need to go, we need to go back into it.
Yeah.
And this would, this would show that, that we need to do that.
Yeah. And it, it shows us, you know, different areas where maybe this one pipe is, is really critical because two-thirds of your water flow through this one pipe or stuff like that. So we can analyze it and kind of prioritize improvements.
There's nothing in existence now, is there Mark, that, that the city has now for information?
We don't, yeah.
No, not really. No, just, most of it's in Derek's head, you know, and, and basically what we've had in meetings over the last 17 years, and this has come up in conversation to get a better idea of what we have, and, and this is what this firm's offering us.
Yeah, and the funny piece of it, we still have monies from the Hydrate Act, about, well, probably about $700,000, $800,000 left of that that works for this, to pay for this. So, so it wouldn't be money out of water and sewer, it'd just be money from that HEROES Act, money that has to be used for infrastructure improvements or working toward infrastructure improvements.
So that's kind of the water side of things. We also gave you guys a proposal that's very similar on the sewer side of things, just looking at collection, not looking at your lift station and lagoons, because we're told that those are kind of most part in good shape. So just focusing on collection, again, a very similar process, same sort of funding, putting together a preliminary engineering report to look at and analyze. And this report is, is almost more for, for the funding agencies than it is for you guys. Derek knows where most of his problems are at, but we have to quantify that and show the need to the folks in Topeka. And that's what this report does more so, I think, than anything. And we can do that, and again, I broke this into two different categories. There's writing the report, which is very similar, so it's a similar cost of $5,500. And then there's, on, on sanitary sewer side, it's, it's hard to, to make good recommendations for rehabilitating a sewer when we don't see it. There's, there's not a good tool for us to have to look at that other than doing a video inspection of the sewer line. Our company does not perform that service, but there's companies that do. And if you want to go and videotape your entire sewer system, that's a pretty big cost to do that. But if you wanted to do that and you wanted us to analyze that data and make recommendations, we have a separate fee for analyzing that data. And that would be another $11,000 fee to analyze all that data. Based off of what we saw on mapping and did some quick takeoffs, you guys have about 60,000 feet of clay tile pipe. That's the older pipe. Some of the, some of the pipe that you guys have had, you've already lined and rehab, rehabilitated. There's some other pipe in town that are PVC pipe. We probably don't need to do videotaping of those, but there is about 60,000 feet, give or take, and we're in the process of, of looking at your mapping a little bit too with city staff. And we can maybe update some of that and get a better number for, for what that is. For a budget number, I'm hearing to videotape it's somewhere around $1.50 a foot. So I mean, that could be a $90,000 investment for you guys to take on at some point, you know, to videotape your entire system. We don't have to do that to apply for funding. Like I said, Derek knows where he, he thinks some of the problems are at. We can take that information and put together an application. And even, and a lot of times we do this because a lot of towns, you know, they don't have $100,000 laying around to, to do a study without funding. So a lot of times we'll actually do the report and make assumptions that, and sometimes it's, hey, the assumption is all 60,000 feet is bad and needs some sort of rehab. And based off of past projects, we know that a certain portion of this, maybe 10% or something like that, needs actually dug up and a point repaired. So we can make some, some assumptions just based off of past experience with other towns. Those assumptions could be right, they could be wrong, but we can make some of those assumptions and, and apply for the funding in that fashion. And then if you get the funding, we can go and videotape either all of the town with the funding money, or we can videotape, you know, the 10,000 feet that Derek's already identified that he has problems with and then, and then move forward with a project like that. Because I'm, I'm assuming that you guys are not going to want to tackle rehabbing 60,000 feet of sewer main next year. So we, we understand this is going to be a phased prop project, but I wanted to give you that option so you guys at least knew what that was and if you wanted to move forward with that or if you just wanted to do a report and have it based off more of assumptions and, and past experience.
So the total, if you guys were to approve both of these, is $33,000 to do what he's proposing?
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Well, if we're not going to, if we're not going to videotape the sewer lines, there's no sense in doing $11,000 analyzing of it.
Right.
That could be done at a later time if the council decides to do that, but that $11,000 for that would not, in my opinion, would not need to be in this. I could see us applying for a grant to get that $90,000 to $100,000 to videotape it at some point, but that's not the case now.
No. So you're talking $22,000 then if you do that?
So is this primarily as a utilities?
The utilities committee met, with Derek, we met for about a couple hours probably. And I didn't, Derek knows all the areas in town where there's issues with sewers. Had Derek come tonight, so Derek can talk to you about that stuff in more detail and Mark can, and Mark can tell you about it because Derek deals with it every day, so.
Well, we know that a lot of communities are starting to face problems that are, you know, and it's better that we look at it proactively like this than.
Yeah. Problem is cost-wise, we don't have a choice but to phase, do phases, so we're addressing kind of like we did with the sewer manholes and the sewer lines. We, we did the worst ones first and then we were, we're working our way through the list as we have funding to do it, and this is very similar in that regard.
I don't know what Councilman Berner's thoughts are on it, but I think it's just another tool that we need to give our staff to, so they can have a better idea of what's going on and, and help them out. Again, I think we should aggressively go after this money if it's there.
Well, the 22, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but we already have the 22.
Yeah, so we have that HEROES money, which is only for infrastructure. We're using, I think, 250 or 255,000 of it for the water tower. And then of that, there's about 60,000 of that left. So that money, that money can be used directly for this because you're working on water and sewer infrastructure, which is what it can be used for.
We're being clear about it. The money to make the improvements.
Oh, after?
Yes.
And remaining money can be used for that as well.
Okay.
Of that HEROES money, yes.
We talked about the model for the, the water. Is there also a modeling program that would work for sewer?
There is a, a similar modeling, hydraulic modeling that you can do for sewer. It's not as, it's not done as often, especially for smaller towns, just because there's, there's not a big benefit to doing it. City of Manhattan, for example, has, has a sewer model, but they just mainly look at their big interceptor lines where, you know, they have a 24 inch or 36 inch main, something like that. I'm guessing you guys have your largest main in towns, maybe a 12 inch main. And, you know, City of Manhattan or bigger cities have parallel mains and stuff like that where if this one gets so high, it dumps into another one and, and all that type of stuff. And I guess I, I just don't see the need for that in smaller communities, to be honest with you. But it can be done.
Derek, would you like to talk about any of this?
If you want me to.
I think you should. If you, if you don't mind, I think, I'd get your input on this too, so.
Well, on the sewer side of things, a lot of the lines that I highlighted were a lot of the issues that we've had over the years. I mean, it's just a common problem areas. A lot of, a lot of the lines that we're talking about, just, there's a lot of trees on them and one of the areas is up by Booker's area that the trees are just growing up and through there and there's no room to get up in there. So lining those would be pretty important. And then they, they do travel, some of the figures that travel down like on Central Street, same thing, there's some willow trees growing up through there. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of bad areas that we just constantly have issues with and we just need to get them taken care of. A lot of its roots, a lot of its cracked mains. You know, the history shows that we're there all the time. So those are the ones that I want to hit up and get them knocked out, so. Main thing is to get them fixed so we don't have to go back, but also high and high issues. That's what we've been starting on and we're successfully, the last go around when we had them lined, I mean, it, it really improved our west side going into our Riverman Cliff Station and dropped the flows down dramatically, so more gating. We just need to continue on.
And there could be a possibility where we come back to you and maybe ask if you guys would be wanting, because Derek identified about 10,500 feet of mains that he's had problems with. And that's where I believe our project is going to be going, or some portion of that 10,500 feet. Maybe it's a case where we want to invest $15,000 and then actually videotape that 10,000 feet, so we can, we can make better recommendations for that 10,000 feet and get more narrowed in on what the budget for rehabbing that 10,500 feet is. If there's, you know, a lot of point repairs involved, you know, price goes up, either way, you're going to have to videotape it at some point in time, which is whether or not you do it after you get funded or before you get funded. And that's normally cash flow determines whether or not you guys do it before or after.
You know, I, I think at the last council meeting, I told the council that we had had a utilities meeting and Derek had told us about a really bad section of water line on Columbia. And that evening, they're down there digging it up. It's already broke, you know, within hours him talking about. So he has identified the bad areas and I think these tools will just help him and help us as a council and a city to get funding to fix those.
Well, and it, it just would be common sense to me that if we repair things prior to having the problem, the major problem, you know, the break or whatever, we would probably be saving money and, you know, and wear tear on our people and all that, you know, rather than having them out there at midnight, you know, getting it fixed before it breaks, you know, on some of this. So again, like you said, $15,000, that might be something we look at for those 10,000 feet of bad.
If you did 10,000 with 10,500, you're what?
10,500.
Uh, 15,750, if I'm not right?
Yep.
Yeah. And what you have the money to do it. And that makes it, so the report's better, I mean.
And we could send out a proposal to some of those, you know, five or six different videotaping companies and we can maybe get three quotes for you guys to.
See what the difference is between doing all of it and the 10,500 and.
Well, we could, we could give you a quote for all of it, but I, I mean.
You know what it is about because of the.
Well, and I say $1.50 for budget, but a lot of times it's, it's lower than that, so. Maybe $1.25, but.
Yeah, you guys are good with that, I can work with him on getting quotes.
The best quotes and stuff.
Yeah.
Well, we've got the money available through the HEROES.
HEROES Act, yeah.
Yeah, with HEROES Act, yeah. And I can't imagine that anybody in our community would argue the fact that we need to keep our sewer and water up.
Lines working.
Going, yeah. Yeah, we don't want to have, like, some of these little cities around here are, some of our neighbors have got some major problems, I understand, so. We're fortunate that we haven't had that yet, so. I don't, what are all of your thoughts?
I think we need to move forward with it and I agree that, you know, there's relying on what Derek's already identified and get estimates on what it would take to get that video and get them what they need so they can, you know.
Get a video for her.
So if we later on have this videotaped, then we'd be charged the extra $11,000, you know.
Well, it, it shouldn't be that full $11,000 because we were, we were looking at 60,000 feet of video instead of 10,000. Now, I also had in there doing, in that 11,000, I was going to go and actually do an inspection of 10% of your manholes just to get an idea, which is about the same number of manholes that you have in that 10,000 feet, so we could go. What I, what I should have probably had a, a second scope ready for you guys, but I think we should go and look at, I think there's, I think there's roughly 38 manholes on this 10,000 feet. I believe it'd be in your best interest for us to go and look at every single one of those and then review the data of that 10,500 feet. And, and I will tell you, that number's going to be less than the 11,000. I just, I just need to put a number to it. It's probably going to be, it's probably going to be around seven or eight, is my guess. I'm just trying to think of how many days we would have for manhole inspection, so. And I could, I mean, I could just say a number tonight and we can go with it, or I could get you a, a better number later and we can make a contract and then.
Yeah, let's do, let's do the contract. That's why I agree. That's my opinion on it.
I agree.
So we know where we're at, yeah.
So 22 is what we'd spend now, then once we get.
Right.
The bids from having it videotaped and your cost to do the inspection of the manholes, so.
Yeah, we can do all that together.
Analysis, yeah. How about anybody here, anything to say about that, Derek?
Well, it sounds great to me.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to?
I would make that motion.
Okay. Move forward. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved or, been motioned and seconded to move forward with BG for the approximately.
22,000.
22,000 at this point.
Yep.
And then get bids on the other. So all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, six zero.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you guys and thank you for the opportunity.
Have a safe trip back.
So I'll sue you in the contract for the sewer that ties that you eliminated.
Yeah, I'll wait to do that. Still have a little line. Good.
Thank you.
Ah, thank you. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Stay warm. Okay, at this time, is this when we swear in the?
Yep, we swear goodbye to Mark and then we swear in the new, renew the new.
Swear at the new guy.
Swear at Sean.
Swear at all the remodels, reruns.
Good. I guess I'm out of here.
Well, just a minute, we have something to do. One of the first new prettiest ones. I'd like to tell you how much we appreciate everything you've done, the city, on behalf of the city. I want to give you this and it's got the old and the new. And thank you so much for the 13 years of work that you've done for our community. We, well, you will be missed. We really appreciate it, and I know all of us have. You and I have worked together for a large number of that, and I know you've worked with all these others, so we just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to make me cry.
And speech, speech, you could have a little.
All I have to say is it's been my honor to serve a town that I absolutely love. Thank you.
Mark.
And good luck, Sean.
Thanks, Sean, we're so difficult to work with. You're not going anywhere. I got you on speaker.
I've got his name down here on several committees too. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Berner, Mr. Wessel, you and Sean, you guys can come up here, we'll do the oath again, and you guys can sign these. And then you can make the marriage, do the same thing. Right up here, so that we can see your faces. You guys just need to repeat after me.
I know it.
So I do solemnly, sincerely and truly declare, and affirm, you guys just repeat after me. Everybody staring at me.
All of us in unison.
That'll do, yes. I do solemnly, sincerely and truly declare.
I do solemnly, sincerely. Sincerely. And truly declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
Faithfully discharge the duty of council member.
For the City of Council Grove, Kansas. All right. Now you guys will sign in print.
You guys cut their fingers first.
You gotta do a blood, Matt.
Well, then we, they're going to sign, so we got them for another four years. So. This one's better. Derek, you can say it, Derek. Certainly will, thanks. Okay, we're going to do the same thing, just repeat after me. Keep that seat here. I do solemnly, sincerely and truly declare.
I do solemnly, sincerely and truly declare.
And affirm. Keep the seat here. I do solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare.
I do solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare.
And affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor of City Council Grove, Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor of Council Grove, Kansas. Okay. Thanks for being a little longer, you guys have a little shoulder. And now we're back to business, and we'll start with new business. City Lake Committee recommendation for B-52 dredging.
Keith or Larry, would you guys like to talk about this? I wasn't involved in it.
Larry?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
You've had a lot of the history before.
This is one of the first cove areas when you come up around the northwest corner. It's not the area where there's a, the city has a picnic table on the wreck area, it's the one prior to getting to that, and it's been worsted, is what it has over the years. There's a drain from the pastures and the hills out there that drains into Sea Lake, and it's silted in most of all of this gradually over the years, clear up to where the cabins are, and all the way back up to where Lake Road is, actually. This area's been a nuisance swampy type area, it's never been deep enough to do anything with, fishing or otherwise, due to how shallow the water is due to the silting. And they've made improvements coming around both sides of this cove area by dredging, so that the leaseholders can get their boats in and out to their docks. The major reason, and now we're down at the very crux of the cove where it all narrows up, touching one side to the other, and this is the area that they were wanting to go ahead and do dredging in, major dredging, and they have the permits approved for through the Corps of Engineers to do this, remove trees, to allow them to get a dump truck in to haul out the material. And I would think it would benefit the lake and the community as a whole to have this amount of material removed, which wasn't ever really part of the lake to begin with.
Yeah. I talked to Derek about it, because I know you don't want a lot of dredging going on at Sea Lake, because it stirs up the lake pretty good. I mean, he said this, and probably letting one other person do it this year would probably be it, otherwise you're gonna stir up too much dirt, so he's not gonna allow a lot of dredging.
Now, one thing's good, this isn't on the Cannon Creek inlet, so that's one of the major inputs of water, so that helps narrow down the amount of sediment that's coming toward the city in the spring rains.
In this picture, Larry, I'm trying to figure out which page I'm on here, it's the one that shows B-52 and then the lake and the Lake Road. How far back into that are they gonna dredge? Are they towards the lake?
So if you look at, it's kind of dark, Jason on page 34, you see there's drawing, there's riding and dark in the water there, that whole area on the back is what's gonna be dredged.
Yeah, in prior years, over at the B-51, they had been dredging over there and stopped, that was as far as they'd come, and this is the next point down that needs some of this silted-in material.
So you did rid of a mini island.
Yes, that's a small.
They're just taking that.
Up to where the bank usually.
Yes, yes.
How deep do they dredge that?
Depends on how close he can get his machine, he's got a long-reach hub, but it's all dependent on how close, so how far down he can go. He can go 10 or 12 feet, right up next to his tracks, easy, but most of it's out here, so you're looking four or five feet, and they're trying to get draft to get boats in and out, is the purpose of that. Yeah, he'll never be able to get his machine out there to go deep enough to go the, what is it, 40-foot stick in it or something? It's a lot of stick, to go 40-foot down. And then be able to load it in trucks to remove it.
I was gonna say, how are they gonna take that out of there, which direction?
They're, they were to mark a path through there, and I believe that they should have.
Yeah, there's a tree, you scroll down there, there's pictures of the trees that are gonna be removed.
Yeah, they were going to mark the trees, and give them enough room, just take out a few of the trees, let dump trucks in.
And those trees are all.
Not clear-cut the area.
And the trees that have red exes are all in pictures. And some of them look like they need to be cut down anyways.
Hey, yes.
Anybody have any comments on it, on this? Looks like it's kind of needed pretty badly.
Yeah, it is, it's a bit of a problem area. Does the city have an arborist?
We do a Kim Ballmer from K-State, she'll come out if it's a.
Sick tree or?
Sick tree or something like that, and you need to get permission. We've used her before over on my street, when we had a guy's tree fall on somebody's fence, and he refused to take care of any of it. We had her come in and do an evaluation of his trees, and he allowed it, and he ended up having to remove like three or four trees that were, they considered dangerous trees.
I wonder if this would be a good area to have somebody walk through there and say, you know, if you thin this out.
Yeah, I don't know.
These other trees will flourish.
I haven't talked to Kim, says she's available. I know, she works at K-State, and the issue they have is they're not letting faculty and people.
Travel.
Travel and do that stuff right now, because I've been working on them, trying to get that, a group of them to come down and look at the riverwalk, because we want to plant that back to wild, near flowers and stuff like that, but we're not able to do that stuff right now, so.
Looks like most of these trees are pretty small.
Yeah.
None of them are big trees, just enough to cut a path for a dump truck, so.
Yeah, that's what we told them to try to focus on, was to do the least necessary to get a dump truck in and out.
It's kind of skinnier and taller trees, and, and the fatter ones. Okay, are there any other questions, do I hear a motion?
Some of them.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to allow B-52 to dredge and remove some trees. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Okay.
Everybody should have a list of appointments.
Committee appointments in front of them, and I'm gonna go down these, a pretty long list, so bear with me. At this time, I would like to appoint the following. Public Works Utilities, Sean Honor and Mark Burner. Public Works, Rosen Parks, Keith Wessel and Jason Booker. Police and Fire, Sharon Hahn and Keith Wessel. Parks and Rec, Mark Burner and Larry Seagrist. Office, Jason Booker and Keith Wessel. Council President, Keith Wessel. Greater Morris County Development, or Development Corporation, I believe it is, Debbie Shortfinger and Nick Jones. Chamber Representative, Sharon Hahn. Flint Hills Regional Rep, Sharon Hahn. Sales Tax Grant Committee, Keith Wessel, Mark Burner, Angie Shortfinger, Don Pomquist and Mark Brooks. City Economic Development, Jason Booker, Debbie Shortfinger, Angie Shortfinger, Cody Catlin, Rick Hemmy, Denise Hartman, Tracy Henry, Susan Harris, Zoe Bond, Brian McDonald, Chad Farr, Kevin Leeper, Micah Dornbos, Lucas Cosgrove, and Jesse Knight. That should be Kevin, and Leeper is L-E-E-P-E-R, just so y'all know. City Lake and City Advisory, and Lake Advisory and City Lake Sewer, Keith Wessel, Larry Seagrist and Sean Honor. Historic Sites, Mark Brooks and Sharon Hahn. The Riverwalk Committee, which this is the amphitheater as well, Sharon Hahn, Mark Brooks, Debbie Shortfinger, Julie Howar, Darrell Bryant, Scott Allen, Jeff Blosser, Mark Lamberson, Cheryl Hayes, Diane Wolfe, that should be E, Diane, Wolfe, Tim Tyner, Mike Luce, Jesse Knight, and Angie Shortfinger. Angie Shortfinger needs to be added to that. Okay, July 4th, Jason Booker, Larry Seagrist, Mark Burner, and Sean Honor. Blighted Structure, Larry Seagrist, Jason Booker, and Sean Honor. Comp Plan, Keith Wessel and Jason Booker. Santa Fe Trail, and these I am separating out, I just had a call, a late call on this, so it's going to be a little bit, there's gonna be a few changes. So actually, Santa Fe Trail will be a committee by itself, that will be Mark Brooks, Sharon Hahn, Diane Wolfe, and Jen Siaka. Then the Scenic Byways will be Diane Wolfe, Jen, oh, wait a minute, let's see. Santa Fe Trail, I'm sorry, you need to add Kelly Judd to that. Okay, and now we're gonna go down to the Scenic Byways, and the Scenic Byways will be Diane Wolfe, Zoe Bond, Susan Harris. Okay. City Lake Annexation, Keith Wessel, Jason Booker, and Debbie Shortfinger. City Rec, Steve White, Dusty Manson, Jeff Blosser, James Crosby, Jackie Mills, Larry Seagrist, Sean Honor, and Mark Burner. Eastside Streetscape, this is a new committee, will be Dee Geeswein, Carolyn Colp, Kathy Morris Hannah, Eric Erickson, Aaron Erickson, and Maggie Adams. Fire Board of Trustees will be Brian Brown, Jerry Koch, Neil Julian, Zach Tyner, and John Scares. Fire Department Appointments will be Bo Bell Chief, Brian Brown, Deputy Chief and Public Information Officer, Tyson Stevenson, Captain, Neil Julian, Captain, Zach Tyner, Training Officer, Jerry Koch or Cook, Secretary, Colby Patnod, Treasurer, Matt Siegel, Truck Maintenance, Shane Mulder, Building Maintenance, and we've already done the border, well, let's see.
Neither of those.
Border Trusts.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already done that. So I would entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the committee appointments, all those in favor, and the Fire Department Appointments, all those in favor? Motion carries, six to zero, thank you. Sorry for all those corrections, I did that last minute, that was my fault. Okay, we're ready for governing body comments. I will start, and I'd like to welcome you, Sean.
Thank you.
It's nice to have you, and thank all the rest of you for hanging in here with all of us and all you, you new, newly, you're not new, but you're newly put in, so it's nice to have you all. And so I would like to start with that, then. I would like to say that in the past, there's been some information gone out, and information that people are requiring, it's not requiring, asking, requesting, about recycling, and most of the recycling has to do with the county, but I, you know, would like for you all to come and put your thinking caps on and see if there's anything as a city that we can do to help people recycle, because that's really requested of me quite often, and I don't know if you all hear from that or not, but I know that was something that was on the late Max Byram's mind, too, and so I think that if we could, you know, take into consideration the things that the city might be able to do to help with recycling and saving our waste, you know, our landfill, then that would be a good thing to keep in mind, okay? And really, I don't have anything other than that, so next we'll go with Sharon.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Sharon.
We have a good time here sometimes, but we deal with some good things, too, and so, just like tonight, I mean, it's a good move to start with what we just spent some money on, but that's good. I don't have anything else, Happy New Year.
Larry?
Welcome to you, Sean.
Thanks, Larry.
You may regret your decision at later dates, but the only time it will tell, before yours gets longer, for some reason, I can't tell you why, after you get halfway through it, makes you wonder if the back half's longer than the first half. I'm sure you'll enjoy yourself, and we're gonna appreciate having you here, and other than that, Happy New Year to everyone also.
Well, thanks for the warm welcome, I appreciate that from everybody, I'm excited to be on the committees, and I'm excited to do what I can to help Council Grove move forward, pretty exciting for me, so, and I do like the idea of the recycling, and I just talked to Travis Schwager, and he told me that milk cartons are worth more than aluminum.
Oh, really?
So.
Milk carts.
You gotta save your milk jugs, and they crate them up, and it's pretty, pretty high volume of trash going through his milk jugs as well, so.
Really? We just need to know where to take them and put them and all out, we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, I think Travis would love to come in here and talk about it.
We'll have to write that down.
I think it's one of the cleaner forms of plastic that's used for a lot of different things.
That's correct.
Okay. Keith?
I would also like to thank, thank you, Sean, and welcome you, looking forward to working with you, we're on some committees together, and I'm looking forward to working with you, and welcome aboard, thanks to everybody for the first board, and looking forward to continuing to work, it's been a great experience, so, thank you.
Sean, welcome aboard, looking forward to working with you on the committees.
Yeah, good stuff.
Ditto.
I got you written down.
It's like going around the family circle at Thanksgiving, going, what are you thankful for, and you're three people in, nobody's got anything new.
Well, we really should have long lists, but you just can't think of them that fast. Bill is ill tonight, so we won't make him talk.
I don't have anything, Sean, looking forward to working with you, make sure you have your phone on at all times.
Be ready to get calls, because we will get them.
No, I don't call unless I actually really need something, so I usually do a long try, too, so.
But you might get a call about 8:00 in the morning that says a building's falling down, down the Asha Street, and you gotta be there in 30 minutes, can you be there in 30 minutes? So, I don't know if any of you were here when that happened, but I was.
I was here, it ended up.
Yeah, yeah, it was, that was an interesting kind of frightening call, one of the most frightening I've had, so. Okay, well, with that, I would thank everybody I've given for coming, and welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, okay, all those in favor? Motion carries, six to zero.